Which we may or may not undo, but we're going to do some modeling with Amy tonight. And the one thing that we didn't ever talk about, and I wanted to bring that up first, was Tom, I think there was a discussion about a way to reduce some of the energy costs. You brought that up on Saturday?
The fuel pricing, when we start budget process, I'd rather than what you expect.
Okay.
But we have it locked in as long as that goes on.
Okay.
It's locked in the last price of last Friday, and it's better than what we're expecting.
So does that mean we'll see some, will we reduce any line items in the budget because of that?
So the gas and the diesel will each be reduced, assuming the department has used the recommended value. The gas went down by roughly, probably 10 cents, sorry, 10% better.
Okay.
The diesel was closer, probably 70% better than the pricing. We anticipated pricing in the rain of like 408, we ended up at 329 plus tax. The difference being the taxes is the 408 was after-tax, and 329 is pre-tax, even though we're taxing them, it's still for tax.
Okay, so what does that do to the, does that save us any money in the operating?
It saves us some money.
Okay.
I feel a but's coming. No but?
No, no but.
No.
It's not.
Nothing, not, nothing to write home about.
Not a patrolman?
Yeah, never done.
It might be in the range of 20,000 dollars. That's just quick math off the top of my head.
Okay.
I think if we could go back through it all time by line, but the budgets for fuel are interspersed through all of the different departments.
Amy, do you have that set up as like a formula or does it work?
I can update it if you want to cut it.
Thank you. I mean, I think we should, right? I mean, I know it's only 20, 20 grand.
It's locked, yeah, values are locked in now.
Okay.
We were lucky that we did better than we thought we would do, so.
So that's a small operating reduction. And then I did want to just kind of summarize any of the operating reductions or cuts that we made on Saturday. Was it Saturday or Monday night? Monday night.
Monday night.
And if there's any others. But you were talking about the holiday pay, was that one, or the?
Yeah, so the holiday pay. So Amy, I don't know if we did that. And then also yours and the deputy chief's recommendation to up the overtime.
Yep, so I didn't do that, so I'll add that.
Okay, that's okay. There's a lot of numbers running around.
Age to bucket.
Yeah, so that's in the police line item, in the.
In that service.
Because we spent 130 and then 140 in the last two fiscal years, so I think we were.
We were at like 260 something.
Right, so we were going to come, well, I'm saying like that, we were going to come down, I think, 150. We're going to still allow for a bit of an increase.
So it was like 70?
Yeah, I thought it was, I think it was 70, and then going up 20 on the OT line item.
Just going back to fuel, I don't have, sorry, just want to be careful. I'm running the numbers like as you're talking, but it might, it might be a little bit better. I don't have the breakdown of which is cash, which is need, like, I have to total it.
That's fine, so they're going to go back to the board of finance and then they can do it based on estimate.
This one?
Amy, did you have any more information on vacancies and what we have?
It should be at your place.
Oh, many packets?
Yes.
It should be your. Close.
Okay.
So just to tie the loop on the, on the holiday pay, that was the, was it the, yeah, two something?
Um, yeah, give me two seconds.
Give everybody time to read the vacancy rates.
So the overtime, we increase to 320,000.
Right.
And then we would decrease the holiday pay to, I think, 150,000, you said?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Basically, it drops the police budget a point, right? Give her a check.
I think people are doing some, right?
Yeah.
So we could read.
Yeah, just keep, if we go on too quickly, then we're going to start chucking out numbers. Her calculation, it's a huge document, so. She's got to change it in a couple places, I think, too, with Bennys and everything else. Oh, does that knock the Bennys down?
Um, I mean, yeah, but that's so mine, you know.
Okay. All right. All right. And then we're currently budgeting 200K for vacancy rate, and that's in the end of the budget overall, right?
Right, it is, yeah. It's in the contingencies tab.
Right. And then, speaking of the word contingencies, we have three contracts up, right? We typically put a contingency in the budget when there's contracts open. So we have that as well taken care of?
It's tab 19.
Yep.
Yeah, are you talking about that contingency reserve?
So that's vacancy rate, yeah.
Unsettle contracts in early voting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So what questions do people have on the vacancy rate? Vacancy tab? I mean, we have them, right? We're always going to have them. The game, or the danger you run is if you budget too high, then you're, you're short, right? And then the transfers got to come from somewhere else. If you budget too low, then you'll lose the opportunity to do something else for the taxpayers in there, right? So trying to thread the needle.
Well, and if we take, if we increase the vacancy rate, then we are going to reduce our operating expenses, but then that's going to reduce our year-end savings. I mean, we're essentially taking it, you'd be taking that earlier, right, instead of having it at year-end savings.
Or you put a position in, right? So you go up 100K on the vacancy rate, but you add a position, which is part of it, which is dangerous, too. Yeah.
The first-year median is like 250,000 without pandemic years. The pandemic years is on fire.
Yeah.
But if we just do without the pandemic years, the median's like 250,000. It's 200,000.
So are we playing with fire going up 50K, or is it, I mean, it's?
I mean, I'm conservative, so I wouldn't, but.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I think we leave.
Yeah, just leave that in our back pocket, see the scenarios later.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
A lot of placeholders, really.
Well, we do, and that's, but that's.
That's the scenario of playing.
So what, so going through the pages, the six-year CNR pages, Tom, I assume these are the updated funding sources that you and Amy put together for us? Okay. So we all agreed in consensus to these, so if folks want to eyeball those as we go through, but this should be, as we talked about. And then same is true for CIP, so the biggest change would be the bridge, and then the removal of some of the, the dam switch to bonding, because we still need to do them, but those are in the, in the super out years.
I have a question on CIP that I had a note on, and I don't think I asked it. And if I did ask it, I apologize. You ready, Tom? You. The Eno infrastructure, we moved it up within an outer year last, in the last budget. It was, why did we move it up?
One, it was recommended by the facilities master plan, and two, I believe there was some belief we could capture the ARPA funds.
Hmm.
Okay.
And to a lesser extent, the building's falling apart.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's the answer.
Yep.
All right. This is a super rudimentary question, doesn't make, just curiosity. Are the elevators the same, will the same ones go into the Eno that go into the library?
No, they're going to be different, same, probably same technology. And there's still some parts that still may get reused, like the shaft and the piston, but all of that can be refurbished back soon.
That'll be under control, because I have no idea what you just said.
It's going to go up and down.
Perfect. It's going to work when somebody pushes the button, it goes ding, and it takes them where they want to go. Beautiful.
Like Eversource, did the lights go on or not?
I wouldn't compare it, well, Eversource has got a better track record the last few years.
They did very well.
I give them credit.
I didn't lose power.
One thing about the flyer bridge, if we use ARPA funds instead of bonding for that, the savings that we're going to realize in interest is going to be realized not in this coming fiscal year, it will be realized starting the next fiscal year.
Absolutely.
But that would be an ongoing savings in those.
Rough years.
Out years, right. But it does not, it's not going to help us this year.
Absolutely. So the first luck woman and the finance director both had the same idea and recommendation of dealing with capital and debt service in the current year, and in discussing with both of them before the meeting, this is both their ideas, not mine, that we potentially pull back that placeholder 600K for the health reserves, because admittedly, we don't know what the number is yet, and we won't until the end of the fiscal year we're currently budgeting for. And again, it could, we still need to do it, but that's more of a board of finance decision at the end. Again, I think we all would agree, we want to shore that fund up, but Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, it could be 20K, it could be 600K, it could be a million. We don't really know, so.
So based on the fiscal year 24 budget that we put together, we wouldn't need it. But if they continue to fluctuate in that 4% gamble, if you will, that we're taking comes to fruition, then we could need it.
So to that end, I would recommend we pull that down from an ARPA, ARPA allocation standpoint, and then, I don't know where we all are on the business plan.
So I was going to speak to that. So we dropped it to 250, and if there's a way that we can use that to offset some of the bonding, to help taxpayers now or in the next 10 years, I'm, I'm willing to bring that back up to take it off the table, because we, I think we need a few hits in this ARPA cash bucket if we want to make a difference in the debt service and bonding piece. I know no one wants to give up the housing, I suggested that, but that's, that's the one, if we could get the 600 health reserve and then the 250K, given the situation right now with, you know, resources at town hall, implementing a new program, having to create some agreements with Bob and stuff like that, and it, and, you know, we tried to have it happen at the end of last year, and it didn't happen, so I'm looking for consensus here to see if people would be willing to drop that and use it for, like, the bigger picture. If not, that's fine, but that's something I'm putting out there.
Yeah, I would consider it. I mean, I think that, you know, we want to support the businesses. I think that implementing a program like that right now is just resource-wise going to be very difficult. I think putting it towards our, our capital projects still benefits everybody in the, in the community, and so I, I think this is always a program that, doing, especially if it was some sort of facade program, that is, those are conversations we could always still keep having with our partners at Main Street and with the business community, and, and it may just happen at another time.
Yeah, I mean, even year-end savings, you know, this year or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So it's not like it's off the table, but it seems like we can potentially put it to better use today.
I guess my question is, like, are you talking about using this money, is any of this money that we're putting towards capital projects, are we going to actually reduce what is going out to be bonded in this year that would give us savings next year?
So that's the, that's, so, yeah, that's, that's the recommendation that both the finance director and the first luck woman have, is that we would basically send to the board of finance 850,000 in cash that we are recommending be used to lower.
What we put out to bond.
This year's debt issuance.
Okay.
And I think we have to have a philosophical conversation, do we want it to go against the 10-year, which means it will have a larger.
Yeah.
Annual impact, or do we want it to go against the 20, where it will reduce more interest, but a lesser annual impact?
And so just verbalize, verbalize what that, I think for the greater community, verbalize what that lever allows for.
So, I mean, 850,000 is basically 80, 80,000 bucks a year, 90,000 bucks a year, right, with interest on a 10-year note, and it would be half that on a 20-year note, I mean, round numbers, right? So, and how much in ballpark are we going out for the 10-year tranche?
So we're dropping 11 to 10, basically-ish.
Over the, over the, over the period of the.
No.
Correct. So instead of her going out and getting an $11 million issuance, she's going to get a $10.2 million issuance, right? So we're saving the taxpayers' money, and then because that will come due in the next fiscal year, we would actually, that would be saving real dollars.
Sure, right.
Yeah.
So I.
And free up bond capacity as well.
I, I think it's a, I think this conversation has a strong merit, and I don't want to relitigate the, the ARPA list, but I think in theory, then, with that, with that lever, with that being the end goal, then I think you look back across the ARPA list, if we, maybe you don't need to, but you've already done it in the eyes of which of those are, which of those are issues or, or, or things that can be avoided by some level of tax, taxation, what are necessary improvements or services, or which, what are things that can be paid for in other ways? If that, because then just, then, we, we could take the entire 3, 3.7 million and just plow it into that, in theory.
So philosophically, we are, we are. Technically, we've already done that, because we're using it against projects that are either in the current or out years and accelerate them. So one way or another, we're saving, we're saving operating expenditures in the future with most of the decisions we've made already.
As long as we're not funding things that could be paid for in another way, or.
Or we wouldn't do otherwise.
Otherwise, we wouldn't do otherwise.
We wouldn't do otherwise.
Remember, because you brought that point up the other night, Sean, you said, ask yourself the question, would we be doing this?
Yep.
Absent ARPA.
Yep, so, I mean, we are.
I don't know, I'm not saying we have to relitigate that list, but I think it's, if we're going, if, if we're, I get, it's, it's a, it's a very valid argument, but could we actually enhance it then, if that's?
Can we pull up what we had for our ARPA changes last time we met?
And we've already cut a bunch of them, like, you know, we've already not done a bunch of those, so.
I mean, in.
And some are already, go ahead, some are done.
In rough math, if we do what we just talked about, we have 2 million, I'm rounding, on the bridge, we have another 850 on what we just talked about, so that's 2.85, right? We have part of that 389, or all of that 389 for.
For the design.
You know, is design, right, which we have to do, right? So now we're over 3 million, right? And then we've got some nickels and dimes in the CNR, 50K for the town manager search. Basically, everything else is nickels and dimes.
Yeah, simplistically, I don't think you wouldn't do the bridge, if your tactic is to, is to essentially pay down and free up.
Well, the bridge does the same thing, it just does it in a different year.
You'd be bonding it, so you'd be.
Well, you could do it this year.
You could do it this year, but again, so we're also hedging in against future interest rates being higher, which is why we chuck it against the bridge.
Yeah.
Which actually can save us more by doing it that way. We're doing both, basically, is what I'm recommending, because I don't, I don't know if rates are going to double, or if they're going to stay the same.
Well, the one thing, too, we still have that two-year Latimer hit where we almost hit the 8%, so all this will lower.
Both of these actions lower that.
So that, that's, and that was talked about many, many times, stay away from that.
So this is, this is tax avoidance, absolutely, because when we get to 8%, that is a set number, and if we get to 7.75, that is, you know, that's a quarter point savings in debt service that translates to a bottom-line tax decrease, right? Because we are not going to fill that hole in, right? Because we've all had a commitment, and the board of finance has told us, we're not going and staying at 8%, we're coming back down.
Yeah, that was the understanding, we.
So both of these tactics serve the purpose of keeping us away from 8, and having us phased back down to where the community has wanted us to be, which is 7, and then perhaps returning to cash. Amy, all of that's true, right? So there's the ARPA list.
We've already took a bunch out.
So Latimer, we already committed, so we're not, we can't take that out, right? I think.
Right, I think we've committed to that.
I think we've, in spirit, committed to Eno, and again, it defers, you know, debt service costs in the future.
Yeah, and the.
I think we're not, we're not messing with the library, right? So, I mean, really, it's the housing authority question.
Have we taken the tourism map out?
Yes.
Yeah, and we, did we all decide to take out the fire district generators?
I think that was still up in the air.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, I don't think we.
Because I think we need to get a pulse on that.
Again, I got to go back, I'll, I'll relitigate that, there's a mechanism there from which to pay for that.
Okay, well, I just.
To fund it.
The only reason I would support that is because we've been pretty focused on public safety, and we're giving a lot to the ambulance. They should have a resource to fund it, but they don't, so, but.
There's never, I, I don't think that, yeah, the fire department is incredibly important to me.
Right.
You know, because of my background, experience with them, but again, I don't think, the fire department has never not been able to meet its funding needs, capital needs, equipment needs, training needs. They have the mechanism there, so, whereas this is something that certainly does fall into one of the things I said, which is health and welfare, the difference being, it's not taxing, I don't look at it as taxing, if we don't pay for it, then the taxpayers are going to have a tax implication. The, the fire department is just going to reprioritize their capital replacement schedule, which they fund 100% of. That's, got to get people, we got to, we got to get that understanding, I think.
Well, we, they, I mean, when they, they, they came to us in, as a preview in the finance subcommittee, and they, you know, Jim said, they could pay for it, they were asking to share some of the ARPA funding with us, because they got none. So, you know, they made a good case for it, but I guess it's, it's kind of.
Well, if we're trying to do what we're trying to do, which is relieve.
Yeah.
The taxpayer, you know, the impact on taxpayer through, through potential debt relief, and they have a way to pay for that without impacting the taxpayers, because yesterday we'll be charging the taxpayers, but they're going to be charging it as part of their normal.
Yeah.
What do people think?
Chris, I could join you in that position.
I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, I think the fire depart, the fire district will get their generators. There's not a scenario under which they, they will not get their generators. They may have to make some decisions about how they're going to fund it, which may push out some other purchases, but they do have a mechanism, they are a taxing authority, and, and they're going to be able to do what they need to do for public safety.
And they're a decision authority, they, they make the decision on what they want to buy and don't want to buy, when they want to buy it, not buy it, with, with completely independent of any of us being able to impact that, so, they will get the generators. I'm just, yeah, sorry.
I think, I think that, I could be on board with, with, you know, reallocating that money to provide, you know, more tax relief to our residents.
Yeah, that's true.
Does it help, I mean, we.
Yeah, like, yeah, the, if we're, I guess we're switching, we're changing philosophies a little bit, right? So, like, go ahead, Heather.
Right, well, I said, if we're supporting a certain philosophy, then we need to support it throughout, I think you can't support it on one item and not another.
Can you elaborate on that, Heather?
So if we're looking, as Chris said, to use what, as much of this, if not all of it, for bond relief, then a number of things need to come up.
Yeah, we gave up the, we're, we're giving up, we've given up the business, we think we give up the business program, the 600.
Yep.
So let's say we include the fire district on here, would we give up the housing authority?
Well, again, going back, I think the housing authority, arguably, there's other grants they could go after, but we know that's not easy. I mean, same with SVAA, so I sort of put those together, whereas the fire district can tax, or they can make other, you know, other decisions.
Yeah, I'm not making that strong enough, or maybe I'm just wrong, you know, you feel, you can disagree, it's okay, but no one else has another mechanism from which to fund their need. Everyone, so, every, everybody else, I, they have, none of the, the rest of these folks have anywhere to turn but us. So that's, that's kind of what I'm hanging on, Heather, in a certain, a certain way.
Okay, you could make an argument, and I agree, the housing authority, we, we know that they need it, that we could make an argument that they could be getting grants or loans or things like that from the state, right?
Well, then, then they should be chasing those harder, then.
Right.
I don't, I'm, I'm assuming along that they are, I don't.
I don't know.
So from my standpoint, we have a lot of different buckets, right? And I think we're never all in on one bucket or another, and I think if you look down this list, I think we've, we've, again, I'll use the analogy, we continue to thread the needle, we're deferring nearly $3 million of, of either current year debt service coming up or future debt service, which I think is, I would hope that the board of finance and the taxpayers would appreciate that. I think we've been really thoughtful with our prioritization on our capital needs, and we have substantial capital needs, and I think at the end of the day, if we bought a couple of generators for our partners, I'm, I'm not sure it stands in the way of the overall philosophy we're trying to do. Chris, I agree with you, they can fund it in a different manner, but I don't think it's out of line, as, as the first luck woman is saying, with our priorities of, of public safety, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a coin toss, right? It's, it's either another $12,000 in debt service deferment for, on a 10-year bond, or it's, it's partnering with our public service agencies to make sure they have generators. And I know they can get them another way, but to me, I, I think we've fulfilled all of the missions if we, if we left it in the ARPA funding.
I would be for leaving in the housing authority, the fire district generators, and the SVAA, all three, because, even though I think, I agree with Chris that the fire district is different, that they are their own taxing authority, if we're going to look at them and try to be consistent, I would, if I had to take them as a group, I would vote to leave them in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think all of these are reasonable positions, and I, personally, whenever the consensus of the board is, I'm comfortable with on this.
Okay, so Amy, can you put that back in for now?
We didn't take out the business program.
Yeah, and drop, so is that 861 on the side, is that the business program and a couple other things?
The business program plus the health.
Okay, good.
Okay, so can you just, yeah, so that's out of the list already? Okay, so what's, so the 1-1, so we'll call it 1-2 is what we're doing, and then, then the bridge is also.
We have 3-9.
Right, because we add a little bit extra, so the bridge is in there, and then, so that's the total ARPA tranche, right? The remaining tranche one and all of tranche two.
Yeah, I got like 735,000.
To do with what we discussed, either debt, 700, it'd be nice to be a million, but that's, I'll take.
Keep that in.
Go ahead, keep that in.
Well, so again, it's, it's, it's 2 million of the bridge, and it's another 700, about 800,000, so it's, it's 2.8 million that we're deferring debt service. So I, I think that's something the board of finance would appreciate, and I think the taxpayers would appreciate if we sent that over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
800,000 in current year, and a million. Amy, how do we have to account for that? Do we do it as an operating transfer for debt service, like, how do we do it?
I guess based on the 735,000.
Okay. All right, so we'll see that on the mil rate count.
So that'll come off this year's, from, from what we'd be doing this year, so it would actually impact this year.
Yep.
And the bridge will impact the out years.
Right, right.
Great, so two things, yeah, so the mil rate count will change, and then the, the 10-year debt service schedule will change.
Right, so it doesn't have to be tonight, but then.
No.
It would give you some mental preparation to give you that money.
To be able to reduce the bonding for this year.
Because we're going to be.
There's no way to do it without.
We have to assign it, right?
I think we're.
We can't, we can't do a sup because we're over.
Well, no, we're under now, but.
But we still have time to go.
We have to assign it, so.
So we'll assign it.
Okay.
So we'll do an assignment.
But we still have a few months to go before, well, we hit the...
We'll do an, we'll do an assignment, because we're all PTSD from supplementals.
Okay, so you got it covered, right?
Lisa, we're not doing a supplemental. Not you, the other Lisa. All right.
Yeah, so, okay.
Anyone else have any pearls of wisdom, or great ideas, or great ideas, or even mediocre ideas on operating savings?
Well, we, Heather had a couple points the other day. Did you, you brought up the...
Vacancy rate, I brought up, but...
Yep.
But we said that, and then conferences?
Yeah, so potentially, you know, perhaps we could reduce our conferences across the board, I think they come up to around 150,000, we could up and decrease them like 30%. I don't know, I know some departments need them more than others for specific training, and others I think are more nice to have. I don't know how that falls, but...
Yeah, did we use it all? So, the one point that I was gonna make is the last two years, we've come in a million under from our budgeted expenditures, so is there room, you know, where is that? Because we end up using it a year on savings, but are there places, I mean, it's kind of too hard to find, but if there's a couple of buckets where there are savings, but if it's not gonna amount to much, you know...
I can add something to that.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Just, we've seen those professional conference and training costs go up the last couple of years.
Okay.
So by cutting it 30%, you're basically, you're basically almost, in many cases, that you can't afford to go. Is that, that money that's gone up is paying for what the new cost of those is, or we'd ask for increases to cover that cost. Philosophically, whether you think it's needed or it's not needed, that's a different story, but if you cut it 30, you're basically wiping out a lot of them.
The budget amount is the whole...
Well, I mean, look at your...
I, yeah, I think, I'm not gonna steal Eric's, I don't know why you're not verbalizing stronger, but I think it just, I think it's a place to look. I hope that all of the, I hope that all the conferences that are put on there are of need and of value, and so I, I trust our leadership, but I just think that, you know, as a, as a business leader, I think it's, just from a simple morale and optics standpoint for your troops, it's the wrong message to send.
Right.
I have no doubt.
And then I think the amount of money you save isn't enough relief to the taxpayers to make it worth, worth the pain we're going to have in morale, and, you know, I think this is, this is part of attracting a high-quality workforce.
Right, that's, yeah, so, yeah, I, that's a good...
Yeah, thank you, Heather.
Good idea, Heather.
Heather, it is fun, I mean, it's fun, but I think of...
Okay.
So let me play with more, one piece of fire, though. So we don't have a town manager, and we're not going to have a full-time town manager for probably six months, right? So are we, do we still need to budget all the town manager conference stuff? I mean, again, I know it's niggles and dimes, but there's nobody that's going to be going to ICMA, right? Or do I just leave that alone?
What's the, well, it'll end up in year-end savings, and we'll take it and put it to...
Yeah, okay.
Well, but they're taxing for it, so we could...
I mean, it's six grand, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Guess that's not...
You can't have my generators, you can't have your...
I'm just saying, that's something we're not actually cutting, because there's no one to go to it. There's not gonna be anybody to go to that conference, right?
I think it's the minimus.
Okay, next.
Yeah, so we have to start looking at stuff, right?
So, yeah.
Like up there.
We do the thing that we do.
I don't, I have no vision.
We watch Amy do the magic. So while Amy's pulling up the magic, she did give us the three scenarios we asked for on a preloaded mil rate calc.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, so go behind the CNR and SAG pages.
So I didn't get a chance to look at this.
It's all the blue writing on it.
So this basically saves us from driving Amy nuts and asking her for 20 scenarios tonight, hopefully it's only ask her for a few.
Tell us what we're looking at.
Scenario one.
Number one, so do you want to start with, best scenario, Amy? You want to start there? So the first page we have is best.
Oh.
Oh, I thought that said best, base, you're right. I thought that was a subtle message you were sending to us, that we should just remove the town managers budget. It says base, you're right.
Wait, I'm on the...
Apparently, I need, I need the reading glasses, too.
Why don't you start with scenario?
Let's start with base.
I'm on the wrong page, I'm on scenario... Oh, thank you.
Max has an increase of $470.
So, yeah.
Okay, so this is, that was where we started.
Yeah.
So our budget would go up 5.65%.
Right, so the scenario one budget is including the Hartford Interval House, the DEI...
Hold on, these guys aren't caught up yet. So the very top line town operating budget, 25.7 was prior year, 27.1 is the town manager proposed, it's a 1.4 million increase for 5.65. So the top line that you're looking at there is scenario one that we've been monkeying around with, that Amy is now explaining to us, so...
Well, up here is scenario one, plus the other changes that you guys made at the beginning of the meeting.
Right. So that includes all of the positions that we, that we talked about, so a maintainer, an officer with a sergeant, a mechanic, the students where he celebrates, the library, and the DEI council, right? So we would change the town managers' budget from 5.65, and we would go up basically a point and a quarter, point, point two, 1.2, and we'd go up to 6.89, which would change the overall net expenditures from 7.63 to 7.87, because there's also a debt service decrease in here, right?
Oh, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Because of your...
I don't have that much awareness. Is that because it's...
She's adding it, adding it, right?
Thank you. Okay, so that's why I'm confused, because I'm trying to find what's on the screen and hack it.
Yeah, so don't, go to the base, go to the base, don't follow what she's doing. Go to the base first.
We're adding a lot of services to care.
So this is, again, this is all in, everybody gets a staff, everybody gets staff, right? This is what we talked about, I'm not saying, it's not worst case, it is most case.
Right, that was the, the most loaded.
So this is our starting point for today, basically, is all the things we wanted, all the things that town staff asked us on the prioritized list from the town manager, with the cuts that we've made.
Including, including our non-bonded now ARPA.
Correct.
Right, the 90,000 debt service.
What's the impact on the median home?
Twenty bucks.
Oh, there it is.
So it goes from 470 to 49, it's $19.
So that's $19 a year?
Correct.
A year?
For the, for a median home, some people are looking at much higher.
What are we even talking about here?
We're talking about a taxing...
No, 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 I know, but it's the minimus. It's very small.
It is, but it compounds.
Well, yeah, it's not small for everyone, and everyone's already unhappy and facing a tax increase.
Be careful, I don't think everyone's unhappy.
Who's unhappy? Don't say that everyone's unhappy.
People have commented on the tax increase.
So they think...
Maybe not to you, but I've heard from people.
The problem is, is that people are upset, they don't actually know what the tax increase is, and that's the challenge, right? They know their value went up, and taxes are probably changing on, on the upward basis, but they don't actually know what their tax increase is yet.
I would say that, so not everyone's unhappy, because I would say quite a few people are happy that the equity in their home is significantly increased.
Correct, but nobody's happier to pay more taxes, they don't yet understand what the impact is, and there's somebody I work with, and I actually walked them through their tax liability based on where I thought we were gonna end up, and it was a 450, 600 dollar increase, and they go, oh, I don't care about that. So they started the conversation furious, they ended the conversation going, oh, that's nothing. So I, again, it's, it's, I'm not saying this is an easy discussion, but I think there are people all over the map, furious, they realize it's no big deal, and couldn't care less, because their equity in their house went up. So I think we've got all three of those folks out there, and I'm not gonna project what the percentages are. But it's our job to pass a budget that makes sense, that funds the services we want and need to fund. We've paid a lot of money for studies, we've paid a lot of money to invest in our community, and we need to make decisions about, is this the year that we're gonna invest in additional staff and defer additional debt, right? And we had a philosophical agreement that we are gonna try to defer future borrowing costs to keep taxes lower in the future. Are we gonna offset that by adding additional people to the budget? Because we believe that those services are necessary, and that we're comfortable with those two coming together, which to Eric's point, yields a $19 median tax increase. So when we talked about philosophically before, where, you know, you know, this is where everybody needs to dig into where, where do they come in from the budgeting process, right? Where's your, where's your heart on this stuff? Well, before, so before everybody passes judgment, let's look at the other scenarios, just to, just for devil's advocate, Amy did a bunch of work. Let's just look at, if that's all right with everybody. So just, can you show us two, Amy? If you don't mind?
Two is difference between with the non-police.
Correct.
So two only is a decrease as it relates to police, like the public works.
Right, and we did, we gotta put in the other negatives, right? Sorry, I know this is a pain in the neck.
The way that I'm thinking about this, though, is we're talking about a number that's about $480, and I think that we can have a debate whether that number is too high, but for me, knowing that we're adding about $20 to that number, and staffing the town in a way that we feel is responsible, assuming we feel it's responsible, to me, that's a small enough increase that I think I could explain that to, to people who have questions.
So I agree with you, but remember, our starting point is not the town manager's recommended budget, our starting point is 29.79, 28, 28.79 mils, and then add one for the fire district. So that entire $470 plus 19 is our tax increase.
It's our tax increase.
Because they would be paying $0 if we passed the zero budget, an increase from that on the median home, it would be zero. So I, you can look at it as 19, but you actually have to look at it as 489 is the tax increase on those people.
But all of these scenarios are coming in between 470 and 500. I mean, we're talking about, we're moving, for the most part, between, somewhere between 470, 480, 490.
I guess my concern, though, is, you know, what implications does all of this have on next year's budget, too?
Right.
Add 4% to it.
Great, great question.
Right, and then next year's budget is, next year's budget is gonna have the additional decrease in the debt.
Yep.
Right, but we're also, we don't have ARPA dollars to use, the motor vehicle tax will be, won't be there either.
Well, we're back, we're back under, though, right? So we're back under, so we don't need to get reimbursed anymore, because our mil rate's now under.
Yeah.
So we're good there.
Yeah, it's cool, is there, is there a model that shows, like, we used to have a couple where you showed what happened in the next year or two years? So maybe as we do this, should we see what's happening? Because there's a lot of capital asks, cash asks, that we're gonna have to prioritize next year that we, that are out there.
So just offhand, if we took the town manager's recommended budget and the superintendent's budget, and you put it to the debt model, like, it's like an $800 increase in taxes for the median value.
Next year.
Next year.
Each year. Yeah.
So it would be another...
And we didn't, if we did zero this year, it would be a $1,000...
But there's a lot of assumptions in that model, too. I mean, it assumes everything goes up one and a half percent, which some stuff will go up.
So I would just, I'm just gonna say, I'm not comfortable adding all this this year, whether somebody's paying $20 more a year, whether they're not paying more, they have equity. I think with the reval year out there, and I will say, feedback that I've heard from people, most people's taxes are going up, and for us to say, we're adding three positions with your tax increase this year to make it a little bit higher, I'm not comfortable with that, so that, that's where I am right now.
I know, I'm equally uncomfortable with it, I just, I've, I think we have a lot of inflationary pressures on us, we have the Latimer laying debt here, and I think just to add more is, it concerns me.
One question I wanted to ask, I'm gonna ask you guys, the chief and deputy chief, and I tried to get this in before the meeting, the, so the study isn't finalized, right? I know we, I...
The report isn't.
Yeah, so we know the, the numbers. Did, and the town manager did not include that in her recommended service improvements. So I just want to point that out, that if we're trying to follow the town manager's recommended service improvements, that wasn't in there. We did add a few smaller items that were below the, the line. So was the numbers known of the PD when this was done? So, so if we were to maybe redo the service improvements, I'm asking, would that maybe have been in that top bucket?
I have no idea if they...
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying...
I can tell you that, that we did not have them as February 27.
So, so we, like, right, so they weren't there to help facilitate what the service improvements were this year, that's where I'm trying to go. So, so potentially, it really could be in the mix with the other positions.
We put it in.
No, I know, I'm just saying philosophically, I'm trying to justify, it wasn't a recommended service improvement by the town manager, so we're making it one for us.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, but also, like, she didn't have that, the information we have now.
That's what I was trying to get to. So we could assume that potentially it would be there.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assumption. Amy, just to, to make sure, do we have the offsetting revenue change for the building official in this as well? Because I think we are okay with putting in the building, the building official full.
To the, to the base.
Okay. It's a, it's a nominal amount, I just wanted to make sure.
But even if we do none of that, it's still a 470 increase.
So, I mean, again, philosophically, I mean, if the town manager's budget with our recommended smaller changes, so positions aside and decreases, I mean, again, is that folks' starting point, or are folks looking to go lower than that philosophically? Because I think that's an important base, is, are we all there, is that's, that's the base?
What, the 470?
Correct. With our, with the, with the smaller changes, the DEI changes, the library changes, the energy savings, the overtime, the holiday pay changes, the ups and downs there. We've basically offset it, I think, a little bit, right? Amy, we've actually gone down, if we don't add the three positions, we've actually gone down a little bit from what the town manager recommended.
Oh, with the debt stuff modeled, is that how we go down?
Without the positions, yeah.
Without the positions, yeah, because we're down 20, we're down 40, we're down 93, so we're down, we're down, what, 183, so, and then we're up 8, 12, 14, 17, so we're up 17, we're down 183, we're up 17 to change, right? So we're net down, what, 150 we call, 116?
So on the right-hand side, there's really three items, I think. On the right-hand side, there's about three items, I think, that are really driving this, that if we wanted to save, would be our options, which would be the, the police, the parks, maintainer, and the mechanic. And, you know, those came, or at least I think two out of the three came out of studies that we've mentioned, high priority items. I would advocate that, and for me, my comfort level is to leave them in.
I'm just concerned it's, you know, they, it's just a little bit more, it's just a little bit more, and I, I just find it as being disrespectful to our taxpayers this year, with all the burden that they have on them, and our business owners as well.
I don't think it's disrespectful to, I mean, to add positions that our studies have shown should be, should be added. I mean, I think that, you know, we spend a lot of money investing in our trails, our open space, our playgrounds, our new playground equipment, and to not provide adequate support to help maintain this can be short-sighted, and our police staffing, we have heard year after year that that has been understaffed, we paid for a study that is supporting that we need more staff, and then we're, we're not going, it's, it seems, you could argue that's disrespectful to just say, well, we just, it doesn't matter what all that says, we're, we're not gonna consider that or do that. A mechanic is someone that, we buy this equipment, we buy these, these trucks and automobiles and fleet, and then we're not taking care of them in-house and having them last as long. You can also get to a point where you're being penny-wise in the short term, and then you pay for it in the long term, because it's gonna be showing up in the CNR again and again, as we have to replace things that are not lasting as long as they could last, and we're gonna have attrition and turnover in other departments, like our police department, if it's perpetually understaffed. I think those are still valid concerns that we need to, to consider.
I agree that these positions are needed. My concern is that, and I'm not saying they're not, but we'll all, by not hiring this year and putting off till next year, will we have these implications? I just think, you know, our education and board of ed really took a toll on our budget this year. And it, I think it, it has taken away a little bit from what we can do on our end. But does that change next year and give us the ability to have it be more our year, the towns year to put, put these positions in?
Well, I mean, I think we can have that conversation, but I don't think it's disrespectful. I take issue with it being called disrespectful to have this discussion.
You're both right, right? And the reason you're both right is because you prioritize the, the budget philosophy your own way, right? Amber, what I hear is you're prioritizing service first, tax second, and that, that's, and I respect that. Amber, what I hear is you're prioritizing.
Heather.
Heather, tax first, service is second. You both believe in the same two things. You just rank them in different orders. That's okay.
That's fine. I, 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 I'm not trying to say that one of us is wrong, but I take issue with it being called disrespectful. This is not, we do not need to pit the business community or, you know, anybody else against each other in our budget. That's not productive.
I, I feel that maybe the word disrespectful, it was just like I had said earlier, all of it, the taxpayers, we've heard from them that they're facing a tax increase. For us to come in and say, we're adding three positions on top of your tax increase because we have to maintain services. Not everybody, I, I mean, can make the argument, Tom, that we need a, a parks maintainer because if things aren't, you know, so less maintaining, how many people will notice that if their taxes are? I don't know. I mean, right.
I, I, so let's, I wish we could choose different words. Let's, we are increasing their taxes by making this decision. We are not increasing your taxes because their property would up in value. That's, you gotta stop saying that. We're, their taxes are increased. We're, we're not causing that to occur. So we did, separate that, okay, from, so we talk about words. Now, there, this, none of this is, this is completely imperfect, but I will think, you know, when I think about, Sean is the, he's the, the oldest in tenure on this board. And I think about the, the staffs that we've added over the course of the year, the side, almost six years that Eric and I've been doing this, Wendy, four. So we've added to social services, necessary positions. I believe we certainly added, we have added to the police complement.
Parks.
Pardon me?
And parks.
In parks. We have added to the library, right? We have added to engineering, I believe. I don't think we've added to, to Tom's public works.
We have not.
Engineering, engineering has been down. Engineering department.
Okay, just go with me. Okay, this, okay, you know, politicians are known not to say things.
I think we did have to cuss to him for Tom a long time ago, but.
And what I'm thinking, where I'm getting at is that I don't know, other than the police carousel, I don't know that this, this town already operates in a very lead fashion, right? We've got staff that's, that is, is, is taxed, but is taxed because of the volume of work that they face and the commitment they have. And I, and again, I, I, the police will probably continue to, to be a, to be an incremental lead we have to add, add to. But after, nobody makes any promises of what they're going to say in the future. But I think Tom is done. Tom Tiverski is done with this, this parks maintainer. Like, your mechanic is somebody that you need, and you're, and you're done. Since then, I don't, you've, you have responded to the needs that you've put forth and the service level that you've put forth. Now you've responded to the, to the, to the, to the studies that told you what you should do. And after that, I don't know that we're going to, that's why we're all asking the staffing model. But are we, I, I don't want the impressions from, from our town, at least I don't think we're giving the impression to our, to our townspeople that every year we're just going to continue to add bodies and add bodies and add bodies. So we've had, we're faced with nine asks this year. Those nine are going to come at some point. And, and I just philosophically, those nine or seven potentially, I think we just, we did read a one drawback, eight. We've got to start addressing, putting them into a budget to feather them to absorb it because, so we don't do it this year so that Wendy, and you're, you're right, Wendy, you are right, that next year, some people are going to have discomfort with a larger tax bill due to property equity increase. But unless we start feathering in, the, the increase that occurs out of just pure necessity is going to be even larger if we slam five through on whatever board is in front of us. And that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to see what could we start moving into this budget so that it becomes part of the, the expenditure, expenditure stream for our, our residents rather than something even more significant? Because if we don't help the chief, we don't help the chiefs, it's going to be, you know, it's two years from now, when the residents have a big increase, we're going to add five bodies. And wait till you see that tax increase.
Right. Because the school's not slowing down, by the way. The school's going to keep going up.
So there's a.
That's the other problem here.
I'll end my sermon there that I just believe it's painful, it is it. The way I look at it is we respond to, we pay for studies, we should respond to them. And that we should also at least try to increase, to start to put these increases into the, the cost streams of our residents because they're coming at some point. And I don't, I don't know when the right time to do it is.
There's never a right time, right? There's, that's the.
I think that'll point feather in a difference.
That, and again, there's a former board of finance chairman that I used to live with that gave a different version of, of that sermon, is, is our biggest decisions are not the numbers, it's the when. It's when to fund the inevitability of the services that we're expected to provide. And there are opportunities. And you heard me lecture certain boards in the past on missing their opportunity in debt service plans. We can only do schools at certain times because of how we structure our debt. We can only do capital improvements to towns' assets because of the way we structure our debt. So there is a time and a place for every department and every service that we fund in the, in the natural cycle of the budget. And when we disrupt that, that's hard for us. That's a decision that takes courage and it takes tax increases and it's a challenge. So again, that's why I keep asking everybody philosophically, if you're at where the town manager started, you're accepting the normal increases, right? The taxes are going up. And we're not abandoning our principles of either holding taxes low or funding services, but we accept that that's our obligation. Then we have a judgment called of, is this year the time to fund these services that we inevitably agree are coming? To me, the opportunity does lend itself this year because of the mill rate change, because of the increase in property. It's never a good time to do it, but if you're going to absorb changes, generally speaking, when we adjust the mill rate, that's a better time to do it than next year when it's going to show, truly show up on a tax bill as a 9% increase with the board of ed number going up, with our number going up, with that service continuing. And it's when and how do we do it? The residents end up paying the same amount of taxes over the life of it. It's when do we want to do it to them?
Well, and if we historically look at, at taxes and, and have the, haven't the mill rates for the past several years stayed relatively flat.
We're up one mil over a 20-year period. If you look all the way back to what, 2009, 2003, with that, in the town manager's presentation, she showed us, Tom, do you have that, the 20, the 25-year history of, of, of the mill rates in this town, right? So, and, and again, we get the narrative that we're too expensive, we're too that. The mill rate is one calculation, right? Property values are another. Avon property values are higher than ours, right? That's why their mill rate is lower. So on, on our, on an adjusted mill rate basis, we're not actually that different than Avon. It just feels like it because of a number on a page. And we import our value against their mill rate, which is, you can't do that. We don't live in their town. You can't use a house value in Simsbury against their mill rate, just like you can't use it in Hartford. Not that one. Yeah. I mean, kind of, sort of. So again, forget, forget pre-2000 because we were investing heavily, right, in schools and infrastructure. But look at 2003 to where we are today, right? We've made, I mean, I think we've increased staff 25% in that time period, 30% in that time period. I'll, I'll render to guess. At least we've done that in my, in, in my history, maybe in the last 11 years. So, because I know there was a, a higher point and then it came down. But that is also what we need to try to manage to. And our friends in the board of finance will help us manage to that because this is where their highs are. Our job is, do we think these services are imperative to providing good, good town government to our residents? And if we think so, then we should put the three in. If we don't, then we should prioritize them until we get to two, one, or none, is really what I think we ought to do today. Is that fair, Chris?
The other, I think the, the thing is well put, Sean. And I think the other thing that's influential with me is that really since 2015, our taxes have been relatively flat. So if you consider, you know, what that increase is averaged over the last eight years, it's, you know, it's small.
Yeah. And I'll just say, just so people know where I stand, if, 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 if five of you vote, five of you want a budget that doesn't get added people, I'm not going to vote against that budget. I, I understand and agree with the fact that you're coming at it from, you want to lessen the, the, the economic discomfort on our taxpayers. I, I absolutely understand it. What I'm trying to do is swing you the other way to say, this is something, we have an opportunity, right? We have a unique opportunity right now to do it. And we're going to have to face this at some point. And I think now is the time to start. So it's not great, so that discomfort is actually not greater at some point in the future. That's what I'm, that's, so don't, don't misunderstand the fact that I recognize your approach is about trying to lessen the economic discomfort. Also, I 100% support that. I just think it's philosophically, I strategically would be going at delivering the services that I think we have expectations for, in meeting those expectations as they're ongoing and coming at us.
It's also fun with you guys just sitting here staring at us and you literally asking for the position. So it makes it, you know, I know the strategy that's there. I know.
They know us really well. You know who's not here? The guy that got the position last year.
I mean, I think that, considering what you said with feathering in and Sean's point, because I recognize these positions are needed. I was just thinking, could we put them off to an easier year? But if hiring next year makes it a 9% increase or something even worse, then I'm in support of it this year.
So I was.
If that's the.
Yeah.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
So I, I'm making enemy in here. The only, so, you know, I raised the police. I know we got people last year, but we also did the study and we, you know, if they're telling us six, I feel like we should do something about that. The one position that I could do away with is the mechanic. And the reason I'm saying that is because that was supposed to be to help with that shared service model. And the BOE can't pick up their end of the tab. So I feel like, do we wait until, to do that position when the board of ed can make it a shared service to go towards that goal and push that off? One other thing I just want to mention for next year, I'm pretty sure we're going to be asked for a social worker next year.
Yep.
And that's, you know, we said that was a two-year pilot, but we know that that's going to be coming next year.
Yep. So we'll have five on the list next year.
So that's going to be a lot of new adds.
Tom, can you clarify the mechanic? Because when you spoke, initially it was a board of ed shared. But then when we got to speaking of the truck driver, you said that you actually could really use a mechanic over a truck driver. And is that having nothing to do with the board of ed shared service?
It's a mechanic truck.
In my tenure here, more than two positions. So do you think, how many more services do you provide now than you did 15 years ago? I was talking to somebody earlier about some of the small things that happen, you don't know even ever happen. We blow leaves off the road because we have so much open space. And that's a service we didn't used to do. You may not recognize it, but it's probably 60 hours a year spent on doing that. And what that may do is keep the police from responding to an accident that didn't happen. If there was a pile of wet frozen leaves on a road in November and somebody came by on a motorcycle, there's an accident. And that's why when I started my presentation today, I said, when our guys do their job well, nobody knows what they do. They cut down the vegetation at the intersection. So you pulled out safely and you didn't have an accident. They put the guardrail up that was deteriorated. So when you did have an accident, it was a phone call, an embarrassment, a tow truck and not an ambulance. I can't, I can't say it strong enough. And I'm proud of the work the guys do. And they are not staffed up like our surrounding towns.
So I agree. But so for Heather's question, just for clarity, the service group was a mechanic truck driver. So I think we're getting confused. It's actually both, right?
There, there was, and I'm going to be honest, without the study, I'd be happy just to talk about the mechanic driver. And what that is, is it's a position where it is somebody who is both a mechanic and I have the ability to assign them to be, we use the term truck driver, really it's a labor. So we have one of those people right now. That's why we say we have two and a half mechanics. So that person comes in, they don't have the same level of diagnostic skills as our higher level mechanic. But once the issue is diagnosed by the higher level mechanic, this person will be able to do weld, fix, do whatever needs to get done. One of the things to keep in mind, as we've talked about with the police department, as they grow, we maintain their vehicles. We maintain all of the vehicles for all of town hall. So we have grown the workload of mechanics. Our numbers right now tell us we should have 4.8 mechanics. We have 2.5. That's without even getting onto the board of ed.
This gets you to three?
This gets us to 3.5.
3.5, right now. Okay. So here's, here's the compromise I'll offer. I know the finance director was comfortable at 200,000. But if we're adding staff, we know there is, we used to budget for quarter positions, half positions, three quarter positions. Can we up the vacancy to 250, which is basically accounting for what we thought the board of ed was going to pay? And then we will continue to endeavor to get this shared with the board of ed so that we can defer future costs on this. Let's not give up that discussion. So essentially, we're back to what we thought we were getting from a service group at the first time, which is deferred cost by virtue of the vacancy rate. We're funding the full position. And then the ask is that we get it, we get that partial funding with the board of ed because it will defer their maintenance costs and it is in their residents' interest as well.
And we recognize they can't do it in the current fiscal year, but I'm sure we can work together in a, in a future fiscal year to have that. And then again, we can revisit the vacancy rate next year because this is over $300,000 of positions. And if, we likely are not going to hire them on July 2nd. We're, it's going to take a quarter, even six months to do them, which means we could have 150 of dead money in that space before these folks are fully onboard. So I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but I don't think I'm playing with fire on a one-time increase of the vacancy rate based on these three adds.
No, but if the vacancy rate changes, actually, it's a bit.
I did. What's that?
If you're comfortable about them.
I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to propose it to my peers this way because of how it traditionally, especially in the police department, it takes a while to hire folks. Not, not a knock, but it, I, I don't think we're going to have this full complement, you know, in the first half of the fiscal year, based on how traditional hiring goes and based on the openings you already have, is, is what I'm saying. And you have two openings, which are over $100,000 a piece. So there's our 200, right? And I think this will create a third opening. So now we're at 300, right? And we're going to fill one or two of those positions and there will be vacancies other way. So again, I know I'm playing with a little bit of fire, but I think this is basically the alternative to feathering in a position on a half-year basis, is what I'm suggesting.
And you're referring to his current two opens?
Correct.
Does he increase the vacancy rate by 35,000 or more that's towards that?
Sure. 35, yeah. That's even, I was going to say 50, but it was 235.
Especially because it's, that's about what the average has been over the past number of years, even a little bit less.
And I recognize I'm not listening to the advice of the finance director. I appreciate where you're coming from, being conservative. But this is our decision. This is not yours. So if we are wrong, we will, we will eat this.
So what are we going to do? What would be the plan? We would expect to have some year-end savings this year.
Correct.
And what would be our plan for that? To just put it towards next year's debt service?
We could, or we could pull forward capital items.
You know, we always, excuse me, historically, we tried to knock some capital out of them.
Out of CNR or?
Yeah. So what we, what we have already approved out of, proved, what we're talking about, talking about approving here, we would actually pull, actually pull forward and not spend next year's a lot. And we basically are passing the savings on, on a year-to-year basis unless we pull projects from out years in. But typically, we've already prioritized. So we bring in the, the projects we're debating in this budget forward and pay cash for them, therefore creating the same cash opportunity every year.
Rolling cash. The stuff that's out there, Amber, kind of always stays out there.
Yeah.
It's the stuff that we're doing here, we decide to pull forward.
Said another way, we leave the capital reserve fund a little bit higher than what we're talking about doing tonight, is what it is. We're leaving, or Sean.
Where does this leave the reserves? Back in this budget, the 1.9?
17?
It's high. It's at the high end of the range that's recommended for AAA, I believe. I want to say it's 16 or 17.
So can we use some of it for something? Or is it not, does that not make sense?
General.
18?
16, 8, yeah.
Right there.
Oh, there.
Do you know, so capital reserves are in that, or are they somewhere else?
No, they're, they're somewhere else.
Wall park?
About one point seven.
After we do this?
Okay. So pulling forward that cash for capital, if we pull forward a half mil, then we're back up to two, three, two, four, right? That's what we, we, basically the, the discussion we just had. We're basically salting away more capital, opportunities every year, by using cash for capital on the current year. Or, the Board of Finance can choose to designate that in capital reserve and leave it for the health fund, right? Which they may do as well. Either way, we've got, we have cash, we have sufficient cash either in capital reserve or general fund to deal with any issues of that health plan.
So it's one point seven where we want to keep that, or is there something out of it? I thought Lisa, I thought Board of Finance said it could potentially go down to seven hundred.
So are you pulling forward another half mil based on that necessarily, for debt, debt relief?
Yeah.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, because if we could, if we're, if we're actually considering adding three positions, we, we need to make some changes somewhere else.
So what does another half mil do, Amy? Half mil does another fifty, basically? So puts it up to, on the debt service?
And that helps next year, too.
It helps for ten years.
Yeah, that's what we really need to do.
Well, I mean, we, and we would have the two hundred from the Flower Bridge, so that would take that up to like two fifty, right?
That would kick in, yeah, that would kick in.
Plus, we would have the, it was like twenty, what was it we were saving starting this year? Eighty? Was it eighty?
Ninety, right there. On a miscellaneous.
So that carries forward, and then next year, you'd have another two fifty.
Yeah. So we wipe, we basically wiped out two of the positions with our savings, is what we've done.
Okay.
Between the debt service, the vacancy rate, the police overtime changes, the holiday pay changes, the energy savings, we've wiped out two of the three adds. Give or take, right, Amy? Round figures? I know it's not perfect, but it's close.
I have a sidebar question for Amy. I don't know when we talked about it, the one fifty for the S V A A. Is that, that's all baked in already, right? Okay.
And the deferment of their, or the forgiveness of their law.
Forgiveness, yeah.
The, we just, Tom, maybe it's just, are you doing, oh, I was trying to, it's getting out of air time. Like, how, how much is, does Matt have a number what he spends on? What's the cost, what's the, what's the cost recovery, what he spends on?
When we sat down, they're coming up with a number of about eight thousand. That's not factoring in the fact that several companies are going to us. He pleaded with us to fix the mine. The other thing we're going to do.
Me, too.
So can we make it clear that by doing this mechanic, if we agree to do it, we are bringing them into the fold, even though they're not giving us a contribution this year? That would be the intention, at least mine is, is we would bring them in. So we're going to save the town twenty grand. We're just not going to get the payback on the sharing, and you're going to keep working with that.
So I don't know if there would be twenty grand savings, because, and you correct me.
I'm not trying to budget it. I'm just saying, is, go ahead.
But I'm just saying that you're, you might not see savings, because to their point on Saturday, maintaining it the way it should be and the way it has been on two different days.
And, and that's fine. All I'm saying is, aren't, my intention, and I hope my peers is, is that we would bring them into this, even though they haven't funded the shared, shared service. We are, we're doing a shared service model, even though they're not giving us a contribution for this.
I think you're saying we're going to be good neighbors.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
That'd be the intent.
We won't see any other savings.
We won't see any other savings, and again, but we will see, well, we won't see any other savings, but we will see an improvement in, in their vehicle life, which will save the taxpayer money in the future. It's the right thing to do, and if they have the opportunity in a future budget, we're going to continue to negotiate to offset some of that cost, because it's valuable, and we can get that.
It would be similar to the other services we are providing.
Yeah.
So can we look at just where we are, scroll down, and, and also where, what?
So we're an eight-dollar increase from what the town manager proposed.
Right?
Yes.
Given all the changes.
All the changes, everything we just did. We, we're an eight-dollar increase from what the town manager proposed.
And then next year, the, the increase won't be as bad, because we're doing that two hundred thousand dollar we'll pay next year.
So that'll hit in two years, right?
For what?
The bridge.
Right.
That's it, because we don't buy, we don't buy it every two years.
On years, right?
But remember, the debt service that we did carries forward.
Right.
So the one forty that we're doing now carries forward for the next ten years.
Yes, but not the same rate.
No, but it still carries forward.
And there's no way that, didn't you just talk about a way to increase that at all this year?
So that, that's the five hundred.
So now I went from ninety to one forty. Is that what you put in, to get to that number? So this number doesn't show that? Oh.
That's a different story.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were putting fifty in, I'm sorry. Yeah. So what was the fifty you were putting in up top?
So that's if you take five hundred out of the?
Capital reserve.
Yeah, so that would put us at one point two.
So we're looking at, what's up, sub, sub six percent increase, our budget?
Yep. Five nine, five nine, five nine three. It's up on her tab upstairs. Five eight six.
And then, Amy, the debt service under miscellaneous goes to one forty, correct?
Yeah.
I thought we had more to add, if we didn't pay for a couple of other things. I won't go back there, keep circling through.
I think we've got, I think we have a, an impassioned case to make for funding the services that the residents expect from us. I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, because we've not gone spend crazy over what the town manager believes are core services, and I, and I happen to agree with her on those. I think we've looked through all of the line on them, so six sets of eyes for the last two weeks have looked for savings. And I mean, we're down to four thousand dollars here or there, maybe on a conference, that doesn't seem to make sense in the grand scheme of it. Plus, that's one of our goals, is to fund professional development, right? So, I, you know, if we're, if we're talking about two grand here and three grand there, I, I think we, I think we can look the Board of Finance in the eye and say we did our job on this. Now it's really larger strategic decisions. So I, I'm in favor of, of what we have up on the screen, and if we have to come back.
Look at it again.
If we have to come back and have another discussion, I'm okay with that, and we may send it back exactly as we did here, but.
I mean, that is a, that is an increase that is in line with what the inflationary increase is. I mean, it's, it's very difficult to, to be in a position where we are, we, we also are, are, are having, you know, inflationary impact, and, and there is just no way to come in under that unless you just start cutting.
Right. And we have an environment where our residents and our community, I mean, we're going up in staff, we're going up, or in, in residents, in, you know, in, in developments, there's, there's an increase in need, right?
Right.
I think we did a good job in the miscellaneous and finding savings that allowed us to not really move above the town manager's proposed budget while still adding the positions, so I'm comfortable with that.
And that we're saving money in out-years.
Yes.
Which is really.
Yep.
Board of Finance, touch point.
Good talking point. They'll love it. Well, we still have to go to present the budget to them.
But not just that, it's good fiscal discipline, guys, which shows the strength of this board, that it's not, you know, sometimes boards in the past can make very short-term decisions, because you're not going to be here for that future bond, you know, budget, you don't care. But I think that shows good management on our part.
So I'm just going to do this for due diligence. You, all three of you would say that these positions are critical to the services that we are offering our residents, and will make whatever, like, be, and I'm not sure what I'm trying to culminate with. I just want you to say that.
I wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Yeah, I know. So I just, I'm just saying that. I just want it on the record.
Are you currently struggling to meet the expectations you believe of our services?
Okay.
And they have for, for the last twenty years since the other positions were cut.
Okay.
For us, this is a restoration. It's not, you've added facilities over those twenty years, but not staff to accommodate, to take care of.
Okay, so that, the reason I'm asking is because that shows that we're listening to you guys doing what we think is best for our taxpayers. I think, I like that everybody is kind of coming to the same place up here, and, and we can use this as a talking point. If people complete, you know, whatever we hear from the public, we have valid reasons for everything that we're doing here.
Agreed. And that, just to put one more, I mean, again, we're sharing, we're sharing services with the Board of Ed, which is a key priority of everybody in this community. We're potentially working on a challenge with staffing in the sergeant's position, right? And, and the officers, it's not going to solve all of it, but it will certainly improve the execution in the department, and you guys are all about execution, and you do an outstanding job, and that furthers that mission, right? And then you're right. How much open space have we added since I've been here? You know, thousands of acres, right? And we have not added thousands of, you know, the equivalent number of people. So I think you've all got a solid leg to stand on for, for why you're asking for this. So, okay.
Not to embarrass myself here, but we're, we're still keeping the library resource.
Correct. That is not coming out.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
No.
I feel as if they have a problem with us approving and cutting things.
Yeah, there is, there is no need at this point in time for us to be cutting services to our community, and not filling a position is not a reason to cut it. If there's no longer a demand for that, that's a different story.
Well, that's a, you know, maybe there's a different need that could evolve. You keep the position, but if we're having trouble filling it, maybe.
I would trust, I would trust, I would trust any one of the department heads to say, this is, this, this needs to be repositioned, or, if, if they saw it. But we also, I always look at these as that the townspeople voted for that position, they accepted that position in their budget. So we should, it's difficult for us to unwind from that. And as Tom is experiencing right now, while we're having this conversation, we're going to see Lisa here for the next twenty years.
Right. So you're, you also made a good point, is that the townspeople will have to approve this budget. And if they don't like what we're doing here, we're going to hear about it.
Correct. When, when certain members of various committees and commissions who don't necessarily, whose job I don't think is necessarily to determine what a person should or shouldn't pay for taxes, and that's how they frame what, where the direction of where they think a budget should go, ultimately, the taxpayers are the ones who are deciding whether they're going to pay tax, more higher taxes or not, through, through, through their vote. They're the ultimate arbitrer.
Yep. So do we have consensus up here?
I think so.
My consensus.
How much time do you, you got the sale, do you want to keep going?
What? Don't ask me anymore.
No, we, we talked about the support for engineering, that was the only other one.
I think we already did that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Did we?
Thought we did that one. You sure?
I thought we did that.
I had possibly an easy answer, because maybe, is that what he is?
I thought we did that, too.
Potentially the utility savings applied to that, that would at least be something. Again, our concern is all of the work come out, and all of the greats come out, we're going to need that support for having Dana.
We did the building official.
We made that person halt.
I thought we made everybody halt.
What I appreciate about the idea of phoning a consultant is it doesn't add costs in perpetuity. This is a, for a unique period of time, right?
Exactly. And the other thing is, if we don't need them, we don't use them.
Where's, where's?
Where is this?
Where's the service group?
It's in your tab twenty-seven. It's below the line for the proposals.
Is it the energy manager?
No.
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 That's different.
The on-call services, on-call, fifty K.
I think we should do that.
The fifty K.
Yeah, but I'm saying, again, with that being controlled, we could cut that down and just use whatever we have for utility savings. We reapply that utility savings to this, would at least be something.
So you want twenty, basically?
Whatever that magic dumbbell comes down to be would at least be something.
There would be twenty.
All right.
So you're taking the twenty out of there.
We're not in the twenty.
The energy savings that you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, they will go.
And the savings of the fuel and the diesel, right, or the electricity and the diesel.
Gasoline, diesel, and oil.
Got it, got it.
It's just not.
So.
Does that even change?
What does that do?
I think it'll be a wash. Because, I think what you're saying is, whatever the savings is, you want to be able to use it towards a consultant.
She did that too fast.
The on-call.
Yeah, the twenty K engineering services.
We're not adding the part-time police work, I'm sorry. That's not getting back in there.
All right, ten minutes for motions.
Yeah, we do like ten, fifteen minutes for quality check of the motions, and then as part of the motions, we do the parks and recreation fund. We're all approving the report here.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well.
Because that's offset by the.
That was a one time ago.
Yeah. And then don't forget, you have to do the, do we have to do the debt service tonight, or do we do that at a future meeting? Is that anating that?
It's tonight.
It's tonight, okay. Just include that, because that's, that's not a normal motion we will do. And that's actually not going through this budget, right?
Oh, yeah.
Are we assigning it, are we assigning it in this budget?
So the five hundred thousand in would be an assignment probably this year to be used for next year.
Yeah. So that's not, so that, so that's not in the budget, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Then will we receive a signed ARPA list of what we did? Sure. Thank you.
Per se, well, we'll have to have it in the presentation for Tuesday.
All right, just a second.
I found a, an unused forever stamp on this desk.
Well, there we go.
What do you think, guys, we're in the budget to sit?
Amber, why don't you start with this motion, the top one? We could check as we go.
How far do you want me to read?
Oh, there's a bunch of them. Um, we could do them all.
Do all three pages?
No, do the first page, and then all, okay.
I'll do, okay. All right. Move effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to approve the Board of Selectmen twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of thirty-one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars to include the following changes from the town manager's proposed budget. Two thousand five hundred dollars increase to Hartford Interval House, four thousand dollars increase to D E I Council, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars increase to Children's Program Expenditures, four thousand five hundred dollars teen reference materials, two thousand dollars library conference and education, three thousand, three hundred dollars Simsbury Celebrates, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars Parks Maintainer, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars Police Officer with Sergeant Upgrade, a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars Mechanic slash Truck Driver, twenty thousand dollars Engineering on-call Services, twenty thousand dollar savings decrease in energy savings, twenty thousand dollars increase in police overtime, fifty-three thousand dollar decrease in police holiday pay, a hundred and forty thousand dollar decrease in debt service, and a thirty-five thousand dollar increase in the vacancy rate.
Which is actually a decrease.
So let's, let's, so moved, right?
I'll move that.
Oh, I moved it. You have to second it.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, check.
Okay. Move effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to approve the Water Pollution Control twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of five million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, including Avon and Granby C W F share.
Move that.
Second.
All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Move effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to approve the Residential Property twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Move that.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess I could say that.
Oh, yeah, you could say it.
Technically, technically, you're moving this.
Move effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to approve the Simsbury Parks and Recreation Fund twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of two million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
A second ear motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, move effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to approve the debt service twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of eight million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second up.
All those in favor?[1789.66]
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Move effective March 15, 2023, to approve the capital and non-recurring plan for 2023-2024 in the amount of $2,446,031, including $416,250 to be funded by the general fund via the five-year payback method, $275,715 to be funded by the general fund, $686,947 to be funded by the capital reserve fund, $249,760 to be funded by grants, $16,359 to be funded by donations, $367,000 to be funded by the Town Aid Road Fund, $225,000 to be funded by the Sewer Use Fund, $40,000 to be funded by the Geller Estate Fund, $24,000 from project savings, $40,000 from the Building Trust Fund, $105,000 from the Gulf Equipment Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You can do this. I'll do this. All right, so I move effective March 15, 2023, to add the following new projects to the capital improvement plan for 2023-2024 in accordance with Charter Section 803B. Meadowwood Barn Restoration, 300,000.